Board hearings with regard to the renewal of the BRB Public Access Contract. It's now seven o'clock on January 16th. The meeting is being held in the auditorium and is duly noticed in two places, including the city website in accordance with RSA 91A2, Section 2. We'll begin with the roll call. Steve Buxton.
Present.
Lauren Byers.
Present.
Rony Camille.
Present.
Andrew Sinoto is present. Tim Cummings.
Present.
Alderman Ernest Jettie.
Here.
Jennifer McCormick.
Here.
Nick Miservich.
Here.
Paul Morgan.
Present.
Gregory Rodriguez is not here, and Emily Vassar is not here. All right, there is a quorum, so we'll begin. To perhaps save some people, some effort, I did want to begin by providing some background as far as why we're having the meeting. So the BRB is the incumbent in the current contract to provide public access services to the city. The contract provides for a two-year extension, and this is to hear public feedback on that extension. I would note that it's not a question about whether public access TV will be provided. It's a question about whether the current incumbent will get a two-year extension. So we are looking primarily for feedback on how that incumbent has fulfilled their responsibilities under the current contract, to assess in particular their efforts at community outreach, how accessible they've been for producers and for members of the public who have questions about public access. We're looking for information about how public access has been utilized under their incumbency, and generally how they've performed under the contract. So again, I do want to say, because it does appear from some of the feedback that we've gotten, that there is sort of a question about whether public access will continue. That's not really the question that we're looking at here. It's really, will this incumbent be awarded a two-year extension? So that being said, we'll begin with the testimony, and we'll start with Mr. Bartos.
For the record, Bob Bartos, on behalf of BRB TV, I also want to thank the members of the board for coming out and holding a special meeting, and also for members of the public who came out this evening in the cold, excuse me, and appeared for the public hearing. I have a theme that's going to go through tonight's presentation. It'll be very brief, but part of what I prepared for this evening is that I received a number of calls, communications, and inquiry as to what was going to happen with public access TV, some of the subcommittee meetings that have been held. There have been notes and minutes and references whether there was still a need for public access TV, and whether or not that should be internalized into City Hall itself in another department. So with that, I'm also here not only to advocate, but to educate as part of my presentation. And the theme of the presentation will focus on a four-letter F-word: free. It's free to record. It's free to produce a show. It's free to air the show. It's free to share the show. And it's free from taxpayer dollars funding the contract that we're seeking an extension for. People often worry about tax dollars and government control. The BRB TV contract as independent contractors addresses both of those concerns. It's paid with Comcast money, and it is independently owned and operated to run the city's channel for Public Six. Several of the inquiries that I received this week were, how much, my taxes have already gone up, how much more of my taxes are going to go up if we renew the contract? How can this be done? How can this work better? And I've had to educate people. So with that, the city of Nashua has renewed their contract with Comcast. Signed in 2023, there is a 10-year contract between the city and Comcast. Comcast writes a quarterly check. We have seen that check historically in the range of $100,000 up to $125,000 per quarter. We understand with franchise fees, people cutting cable, that that number is diminishing, and I think is most recently, the last couple of quarters, were just under $100,000, varying around to about $85,000. So $85,000 per quarter times four quarters, that's where we're at. That's about $320,000 where I come from. Our contract renewal is $175,000. And the $175,000 is the amount that we started this contract in July of 2022. And it's important to know that from those Comcast franchise fees, it not only funds Mr. Russell and myself at BRB TV, but it also funds the other three city employees that run the other two channels. So Nashua is fortunate to have three channels. Some other towns do not. So there's a public channel, there's an education channel, and a government channel, and we've been operating free of taxpayer dollars from the franchise fee. And I understand the subcommittee is going to have some further discussion about how to fund this in the long term. From my perspective, the present franchise fee and in the next eight quarters is more than enough to fund the contract for us as independent contractors to remain at $175,000, fixed for the two-year period of time from July 1 of 2025 to June 30 of 2027. With that $175,000, that covers all the salaries for George Russell, myself, Art Colvin, who's present, our editor, Harlan Smith, as well as additional contract labor that we use for a variety of shoots. That also covers our payroll expense, our CPA costs, our insurance, our website, the software, licensing equipment, and the like of what it takes to run a small business. George Russell and I and the staff at BRB TV are very proud of what we do. We stand behind what we do. We enjoy doing TV, and we wish to continue to provide that service for the next two years. And I anticipate at the end of two years, we'll be back with a new request for proposal and putting a bid in to continue the contract beyond what our current contract allows for. I understand this board is making a recommendation after the conclusion of today's meeting or shortly thereafter, to make a recommendation to the alderman. That's the charge for this board, to vote in favor or to recommend that the alderman approve the contract or to not. So tonight, I'm asking the board to renew or to recommend to the board of aldermen to exercise the option for the two years in the contract. The other theme that I have tonight is AI, not artificial intelligence. It's availability and independence. And the independence comes from the city hiring an independent contractor such as BRB. And it was done before with Mr. Dick Gagnon's company for Access TV. And he ran Access TV, is my understanding, from about 2010 through 2022, when unfortunately he then passed away. That independence allows us to ensure anyone that walks through the door at public access doesn't have fear or intimidation of a governmental entity infringing or stifling their particular comments, their views, or is my show only going to get played at 2:30 in the morning on a Saturday night, one and done? So having an independent contractor that eliminates any type of concern from the citizenry for gamesmanship or tomfoolery that may occur. Our job is to record, edit, produce, and air. Record, edit, produce, and air. There's a number of times where we will edit a show, or, excuse me, we will record a show. It might take several tapings, or it might come back to additional parts or supplements that's there. Typically, when we record a show, it is viewable and in the airing rotation within about 48 hours from the time that it was recorded. The agenda that came out tonight had a number of public access questions listed on it. I interpreted that as a charge to me to answer some of those questions ahead of time, rather than solicit testimony from the board. So looking at the agenda, I'm going to go down through those four questions, and I have a couple of comments for each. Question one was the assessment of the work that has been done. We look at the time that we arrived here in June, end of June, with Mr. Gagnon's passing and the start of our contract for July 1 of 2022. We have presently covered 10 quarters in that timeframe. We've made 10 presentations to this board. We've submitted 10 reports. I've got a little summary of some of those, but in those reports, we have our numbers, and PEG Director Jeff Peinert also submits his report. I went back and pulled the 10 reports from Mr. Peinert. So these are his numbers vetted and presented and accepted by the board. I also went back and then looked at the 10 quarters that Access Nashua did under Mr. Gagnon's tenure. When trying to go back 10 records, I will sidebar to say that I went onto the city website. I clicked on C tab. All the minutes are there, with the exception of 2020. There aren't minutes for 2020. I'm assuming, again, it's the pandemic. I was not able to see them when I scrolled through. The tab drops down, and you can go year by year by year. So notwithstanding, what I'm characterizing here is I had to go back to December of 2018, all of 2019, skip 2020, all of '21, and the only meeting that Mr. Gagnon participated in, in March of 2022. During the 10 quarters for Access Nashua, they produced eight live shows. They produced and aired 6,800 shows. Again, these numbers were on the website. 6,800 shows. In comparison, when I took Mr. Peinert's numbers from our quarterly meetings, BRB TV has done 250 live shows. So when assessing what we've done, it was eight during a similar round of 10 quarters, 250 to us. We aired 26,524 shows. 26,524 shows during those 10 quarters. Those are shows that are produced in the studio. Those are shows produced onsite at another location. Those are shows that are produced through WSMN, and we'll talk about utilizing the radio to add content in what we do as a valuable service to informing the public. And that also includes shows that we've downloaded from other public access sites to add to content, because we did not want to be the show or the station that would have a handful of shows and then be billboards or slides, as they're known, ad nauseam for 20 hours out of the day. We put round-the-clock coverage into play. So 26,000 shows averaging 2,600 per quarter. So if you want to turn on public access, Channel 6, brbtv.live, you have round-the-clock coverage of shows that you can watch. One of the other things that we do, we try not to fill the show with billboards on information that can be seen or gathered from a website. I know I've often seen, "Come to the crock pot dinner from this time. The town dump is open at this time," or "These hours are here." All that's available now on Google. We don't need it on the billboards. So our shows roll from one show into another, and if someone submits a billboard or a request for a slide, it absolutely is played. So we have, you don't have to wait for a show to stop. Wait for 10 minutes of billboards to get to a top of the hour or bottom of the hour clock. We're not dependent upon that. We can roll show into show into show. With requests to community outreach on our agenda, we've talked about promotion of the TV slides that we have done at WSMN. On our radio website, there are three slides that rotate. They do nothing but promote Nashua Public Television. They talk about my four-letter F-word: free. It's free to sign out equipment. It's free to do a show. It's free to come talk to us. It's free to air a show. And it's free on Roku. In addition, we have solicited a number of hosts and asked them from radio to do TV. We try to, again, incorporate an avenue or a venue that people are comfortable in. For some reason, when you tell them, "We're going to have three cameras on tripods, and a little red light's going to come on, and you sit in front of the green screen," they want nothing to do with TV, but they are comfortable coming to a radio station and talking on air and having a conversation, and then utilizing one of the cameras to simulcast that show onto Nashua Public Television, Channel 6. So we've utilized the radio to produce additional content that we may not get on TV, and that includes Thursdays with Mayor Donches, Chief Buxton, first of the month, first Friday of each month, representatives from the Nashville Police Department, whether that's Chief Rourke or whoever he assigns to come in. That includes the VFW. So there are a variety of shows that come into the radio that is put onto the TV. Again, that is part of our outreach. Mr. Russell has gone to numerous and countless businesses, asking them to come in. He's gone to departments here in City Hall and asked people to come in. He has asked, from a variety of perspectives, to have people come in, and there is a reluctance to do TV. For whatever reason, it's a certain drive for people to have them, and others, they cannot. So we can't control and make people come in to do a show. On the agenda, we've asked about hours of operation. Art Colvin, one of our employees for BRB TV, is here and present. He is assigned office hours, Monday through Friday, from 2:00 to 6:00. Oftentimes, that's 3:00 to 6:00. He also comes in on Tuesday and Thursday mornings to record. Anyone that asks, particularly public health, comes in and does morning shows. We have stayed after hours. It's not uncommon for us to be in the studio on Monday evening, after 6:00, sometimes till 7:00 or 8:00, recording our pro wrestling show and the host that comes in on that. We've also had some music and choral shows that have come in, and we've been there till 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night. That's more than the exception of the rule, but the point is, we are flexible and available to the public, and we can afford ourselves to have someone sign up on our website to request a show, and we will show up and accommodate to the best of our ability with our current scheduling. That flexibility allows us to be reactionary to the requests of the public as opposed to just holding a standard office hour and saying, "We're open 9:00 to 5:00, and if you work for a shift, good luck getting a show." We have also done remote shows. We've done home visits. David Shoneman has done a show repairing a motorcycle in his garage. Art Colvin and I went to his house. We went through the garage. We made sure the backdrop was set, the lighting, the sound, the echo, anything that needed to be addressed. We helped him with the camera work, and now, once we turned him loose, he has now done multiple episodes of rebuilding a 1970s motorcycle from a pile of metal to a functioning motorcycle. We have gone to people's homes for cooking shows. We have gone on-location with the honorable Harvey Key when he is asked to spotlight certain businesses that are in town. We've gone and brought our team to record with him. In addition, we've had the outside studio, or outside the studio, we've utilized for shows that include, but not limited to, the Memorial Day Parade, Veterans Day Parade, the Pride Parade, Nashville Police Department Cone with a Cop, Nashville Fire and Rescue Graduation and Promotions and their training. I've been over to the fire facility. The award that Mr. Dan Young received last month. I had a very small role in providing some of that footage. That is his honor to take, but that is part of the collaborative effort that we've had here and the experiences we've had outside the studio. We've covered the celebration of life for Nashville Fire Rescue Lieutenant Jess Wyman. We filmed at the Center of the Arts for not only the construction, the ribbon cutting with the mayor, the karaoke, K-E-O-K-E, show that was recently done by the United Way. We've handled events at the Senior Center, from breakfast with Santa to variety and talent shows, holiday stroll, summer stroll, Greek Food Festival, Cultural Day at the Library, Black Heritage Trail Ceremony at Holman Stadium, the strongman competition between Nashua Fire and Nashville Police at Greeley Park, Nashville Choral Society and Music Shows. We filmed the mayoral debates, all of the aldermanic candidate forums, the gubernatorial debate, the Nashua Sculptors Symposium, the Eclipse, VFW Loyalty Day, and international soccer team at Riviera University, among others. There was a question on the agenda of how much assistance is provided. I wasn't clear what that question went to, but I guess I'm interpreting that is, do we have assistance from the other members of the PEG channel? And the answer is, of course. We are all a team trying to put something together for the benefit of the public. This is not an us versus them. This is not, our ratings are better than their ratings. We all have three significantly different roles, and I certainly utilize Mr. Johnson and Mr. Young, as well as Mr. Peinert. And we've developed some friendships in addition to working together that Mr. Peinert and I have coordinated for some car shows. Mr. Johnson and I have attended NASCAR and the Racing Museum in Loudoun together, and Mr. Young and I have lengthy discussion on our streams and the shows that we watch. I think one of the smartest moves that the city has done was hire Dan Young. He knows everything that I need to ask him, and he is more than willing to assist us in any endeavor. Again, we try to stand on our own and do, but if I put my hand up or I say, "I have a question," they're going to help us. For services and resources on the agenda, I looked at to say, whatever we needed to provide and produce programming. We've got in-studio equipment. We have out-of-studio equipment. We've purchased cameras and tripods, a generator, so we can run power at the library or at the holiday stroll or over at Holman Stadium. We've purchased a scissor lift and a trailer, so we can bring that to locations and get above the crowd and be able to film. Does BRB, oh, and I'm sorry, we also have Adobe licensing, our website, streaming software. So those are the things that go in, again, part of the contract price that is covering us. Does BRB TV fulfill their obligations? If I was in a courtroom, I would say objection asked and answered. I think we've already covered where that, and I would stand by that we have fulfilled our obligations under the contract, that everybody that walks through that door gets recorded, gets a show, has the discussion that they need to decide whether they wish to do it or not. Question two, how much is public access utilized and watched by the public? This board knows I can't answer that question. Comcast is under no obligation to provide the numbers for people watching on Channel 6. They can watch through Roku. They can watch through the BRB TV website. We also have a number of cameras that are provided throughout the city, at the library, at the Chamber of Commerce, Mines Falls, Main Street. All of those cameras go through the BRB TV website. So we can tell you that there are thousands of views on the website. If someone wants a particular window or quarter of time, we can tell you that we're getting at least 1,000 views a month per camera. Some of those cameras, in a longer term of time, are in the tens of thousands. One of the other questions is, what do we do or how do we quantify what we do? I refuse to get caught up in vanity metrics. I don't want to do a show and make sure I got 10 thumbs up and 3 thumbs down, or how many people are watching, going, "Ah, I'm not sure I want to put your show on, because there might not be enough people watching it." We don't go by the numbers. Someone comes through the door and wants to do a show, we're going to record it, we're going to produce it, we're going to air it, regardless of whether people watch it or not. It's our job to get that show on the air, make people feel comfortable coming in, and put that into rotation. Is public access as currently structured serving its statutory purpose, was question three. I've reviewed the statute and the accompanying materials that this board circulated as part of the agenda. I want to say we are meeting the statutory purpose. We have had zero written complaints since we've taken over the operation since June of 2022. We're happy to address them if there was. We have no written complaints, and that's part of one of our line items on our reports each quarter to this board. We've created policies and procedures consistent with other towns. All of those have been on our website since fall of 2022. We are flexible, reactionary, and independent, and our shows can be viewed worldwide through the website. We've talked about Comcast paying for the right of way and the easement for allowing the cable lines to go through, and that generates part of the reason for the franchise fee and the check that comes through. Our job is to fill the channel, and that's why we've listed 26,000 shows aired. Again, I'm not saying we've recorded those. That is the content that we are providing to anyone watching, whether it's on Comcast via Cable Box, streaming through Roku or Apple TV, or on the BRB website. What format for public access best serves the needs of the community, was question four on the agenda item. We are on demand. I mean physically, as well as airing of TV shows. Shows that are posted on Apple and Roku and TV, if you go to the BRB site, you look at the schedule for the day, you see the list of the shows. If there's a blue triangle next to the show, you can watch it anytime. You can watch the shows anytime on the respective host's website, since we send everything to the host to put on their respective social media. And we are on demand, because if we get a phone call and we can accommodate, we're going to go film on-location, or we can film, you want to film at 6:00 in the morning? We'll make it happen. You want to film at 8:00 o'clock at night? We can make it happen. Again, briefly, because we've talked about it, but I know the comments in the minutes from the October and November meeting were particularly concerned, because the November 1st meeting in 2024, the subcommittee talked about, quote, "restructuring public access for internal administration." So part of my brief comment on that tonight is, we need to be independent. There's no infringement of politics or policies, no infringement of hosts or agendas. All the shows are treated the same. They get replays, morning, afternoon, night, overnight, and weekends. We are free from any direct or indirect influence of any political body or any administration. We are required to remain in compliance with the FCC and their rules. This board oversees what we do and what we put on, and if there is any issue, we are answerable to this board. In conclusion, people may say, "Could you do this? Could you do that? Could you do more? Could you do this?" I think everyone has an opinion that's valid. We are proud of what we do. We stand by what we do. The public access channel is something that tries to please everything or everyone for everything. Any small business has a target audience, a target demographic. We are not a traditional business or a company with a specific target audience or demographic. All of our efforts are put into hitting a target. It's kind of like creating a music playlist. You have to go from a jazz song to a rap song to a metal song to a rock song to a pop and to country, and then loop it and come back. So yes, I anticipate there may be some criticism of there's not enough of these shows or too many of that shows. Our goal is to keep the channel on, put content on, so that there's a little something for everybody in there. Public access. It's relevant. It's available. It's free. It's free to watch, free to record, free to sign out equipment, free to share, and it's free of taxpayer dollars. Public access benefits a free society. Thank you. And my only housekeeping matter, Mr. Chair. Procedurally, I'm still in court mode. I know, I understand you have some letters. I would simply make a motion here or whenever it's appropriate to incorporate the letters that have been submitted in favor of this into the record.
We will be reading those into the record. I was going to give the people who are physically here a chance to speak first, and then we'll go through the letters.
Thank you.
All right. And we're supposed to alternate between those in favor and those opposed. We have a list here of people who signed up to speak, but it doesn't actually say which version they are. So next person on the list is Alderman Guevara. Are you in favor or opposed?
I'm in favor.
In favor? Is there anyone that signed up that's opposed? I didn't think so. Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee, for the record, Tyler Gueva, 11 Barnum's Trail, Unit 102, have the honor of serving Ward 1 downstairs in the Aldermanic Chamber. Come before you today in support of the two-year contract extension. And let's go back a little bit to way back when Bob and George both approached me about going after this contract when the RFP went out. going after this contract when the RFP went out. They said, Tyler, we're looking to put in, put in a proposal. And of course, me being me, asking the questions, goes, so what are you going to bring to the table? What are you going to do different? How can you make it better? An hour and a half phone call, hour and a half later, it was, wow, okay, you guys have a vision. There's something here. There's more than just kind of going one show at a time. There was a way to make it better. George was able to lay out how he wanted to do it, what he wanted to do, where he could see it year by year, and a nice year-by-year progression. That was something with really community television that we don't see very much. And being the alternate liaison for Alderman Chatty here, I keep a close enough look to this. Fortunately, he has great attendance. I think I've only had to come to like two meetings in four years, so it's been pretty good on my sake. But I, I've definitely kept up in the meeting minutes, and I've kept an eye on everything that this committee does. And I got to say, when we look down these questions of what we're looking for and what they're, what the questions we want answered for a two-year extension, they answer it all. They're going above and beyond. There's very few people that I see at as many community events as I do as these two, when we're talking about community outreach. I bump into George at just about everything. I've had to help him, he suckers me into helping him move bags back to vans. But that's, that's what we do, and nobody's working harder to make sure the content's there, letting everybody have a voice, everybody have a shot at what they, at what they want. So therefore, I will ask that this committee give a favorable recommendation on the two-year extension and have it come back to the Board of Aldermen. After this is, after we get through this part, if we want to have a longer, more in-depth conversation in the future of how we see this whole department going out, I think that's an appropriate time to do it. Obviously, for now, looking at the numbers, talking to some city staff today, and talking to some constituents inside the ward, status quo is good, and what these guys are doing right now is very good for the channel. So I please ask that you guys vote for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
All right. Scott McCullough?
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott McCullough. I live at 49 Congress Street, Apartment Six, and I agree with what they said. George Russell has been there. Sorry if I get, if I get emotional, then bringing up, then bringing up Dick's death is hard on me. They give me, they give me a chance. BRB TV gives me a chance. Bob and George gave me a chance when nobody else would. Chris Vaughn will be, is my outside producer. We, we produce a call, we produce a show called Special Talk with Scott McCullough, and I'm the, he's the outside producer, I'm the inside producer. We also have, we have done like, we've done our shows several, I'd say, coming up on 13 years. If you would like to check it out, you can go on YouTube and just type in Special Talk with Scott McCullough. You can see all the episodes that come up. It's fantastic that BRB TV, hopefully you guys have it in your heart to support BRB TV and support people like George Russell, Bob, Bob and the hardworking, all the hardworking, all the hardworking staff, and especially people like Jeff, who, when I came to try to do a, have a chance to learn how to run a camera, I learned from my, my old friend Carolyn Cho, who taught me how to run a camera, and they said, they ain't going to let you learn how to run a camera. The first day, I think I was, I came in and I said, I'd like to learn how to run a camera. Okay, Jeff goes, okay, let's see how good you are. Zoom in, whoa, 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 there. Zoom out a little, right there, keep it right there. And he taught me everything I know. And especially, I'm a Special Olympics, I'm a co-host, I'm a co-host of Special Talk with Scott McCullough and a Special Olympics athlete that will be representing Special Olympics New Hampshire at Torino, Italy this coming year in March, from March 8th to March 16th, I am going to be representing Special Olympics New Hampshire as the only athlete from New Hampshire to go to Torino, Italy to represent Special Olympics. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on, on going to Italy. Next up, we have Mike, sorry.
Go ahead and try.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Affleberg. I'm the president with the United Way of Greater Nashua, and that is a very hard act to follow, but I have very little additional to add, other than to say, I started with WSMN as a radio host about six years ago now, seven years ago now, and over, and produced a weekly radio show on, on the, on the radio station. Couple of years into that, decided to start producing a monthly show on the TV station. I just want to speak to the experience and the producer, host side of what it's like to work with George and Bob. In particular, because this is about the TV station, what I'll say is, when I arrive at the station, typically Bob is there, and he is usually the one who meets my, the people who I'm going to interview, makes them feel very comfortable and at home, helps them to get, you know, mic'd up. Usually I'm late, so he also knows to expect that, and then he helps me to get mic'd up. You know, we sit down, they make it extraordinarily easy. We just sit down in front of the green screen, talk for 27, 28 minutes, and within a couple of days, I get a beautifully produced TV show back, which they've uploaded for me to download. I know that it runs on the station, and I appreciate that. I have no idea how many people watch the TV show that I produce on the TV station, but I do know that we will then download it and put it up to our own YouTube channel and share it then out on our social media, so it becomes really extraordinarily high-quality professional content, which we can use over and over and over again, at literally no cost to us, other than the time that it takes to produce. So I really do appreciate how easy they make it and how professional they are at doing that. I did want to mention, because Bob mentioned this as well, in terms of community outreach, this year was our second year producing an event at the Center for the Arts, and when we wanted to do that, I reached out to the guys and said, hey, would you be able to come in and actually, you know, videotape and, and, and stream this to the TV station as well? And it's a nonprofit fundraiser. We, we didn't pay them anything to do this. I think this is part of just what they do, right? And so this year, it was a three-hour event. They came with the equipment and the personnel, produced the show for us, and then, again, I now have several hours of very high-quality content, which we can then use in the future to promote future events. And honestly, have no idea how we would have done that as a nonprofit without the benefit of working with these guys together, so I do appreciate that. Last thing I wanted to say in terms of, you know, mentions hours of operation and assistance, I, I have no idea what hours of operation they have, but I know that what they do have works for us. You know, I come in typically about 3:45 in the afternoon on a Monday, and we're out the door by 4:30. We come in, we do it, we're out. I'm sure they stay much later to do their work, but for us as hosts, it's fantastic, and we need no additional assistance. And maybe that's just because I'm like a genius of a show host? I don't know. Maybe other people need more assistance? I don't know. But it's really, we just should sit down and they're plug and play. So I fully endorse an extension of this contract. I can tell you, my personal experience has been nothing short of phenomenal. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Alicia Gregg.
Do you need my address?
If you don't mind, or...
Okay, sure. My name's Alicia Gregg, and I live at 4 Eastbrook Drive in Nashua. I'm also a state representative for Ward Seven. So I'm here not only talking for myself and my husband, who's Commissioner on the Board of Public Works, he could not be here tonight, but he echoes my sentiments that I'm about to say, but also as a representative of the community that voted me in. I think what's really spectacular, anytime we have meetings in the City Hall, it's that we have a lot of people that are really passionate about Nashua here. Takes a lot to get us out of our houses, especially when it's cold. And there's a good reason why we're all so passionate about Nashua. This is a really special city. And why it's special is because it's, it's got good, salt-of-the-earth people, hard workers, who care about certain things. And one, some of the things they don't care about is a lot of extra fluff, a lot of the pizzazz and everything else. Now, I also host a show on WSMN.live, and I'm definitely of the generation where we know how many likes we've gotten, and we know how, you know, what that kind of feedback is, that instant feedback, how is something being received? My husband is a big one on that, and he asked George one time, he said, well, what is our, how do you know who's listening to us? You know, what, what's going on with that? And he said, I just know from feedback. And we thought, well, okay, you know, that's interesting. Until we were in a parade in Merrimack, and we didn't have anything. We were actually in the parade for somebody else, didn't have anything saying who we are, and there was a guy with a pretty legit squid hat, and we were like, hey, we love your squid hat. And they're like, we want to come on your radio show in it. We were like, what? So, you know, that's, that's, he has a reach that, that you can't put into numbers, and that's, they don't have the numbers, but it's there. I can't tell you how many constituents, I knock on their doors, I go talk to them. One lady said, I saw you at the winter stroll, jump in front of the cameras with your husband and making faces, and embarrassing. I was like, oh, gosh, I didn't think anybody was watching. But I have my constituents talk to me about how the news has left them behind in Nashua. We don't really have, now we do have the Nashua Ink Link that is starting to pick up, you know, the slack on that, but other than that, we don't have anything that connects people to things. One of the best parts about New Hampshire is the connection we have to our elected officials. We have this massive body of representatives, we have, you know, everybody comes through on the first of the nation, and that's all good and well, the main, you know, NBC News, all those pick it up, Fox News, they'll pick those up, but what, what does that leave Nashua? George and Bob have picked up that slack in so many different ways, and they give our elected officials back to our citizens in a manner that's free. And I know there's a lot of things we could do to be, you know, snazzy and get our likes or whatever else, but we have an aging community. You can't leave them behind. They're the majority. They are watching. They're watching a tour of the senior center. They're watching, they couldn't get out to the farmer's market this week, so they're watching that. You know what? They are logging on, or, you know, having their kids log them on so they can watch that performing arts center be built. That's the kind of stuff that I hear about all the time, and that people are engaged with. We don't have to have hard numbers to understand that our community is engaged, and it's because of these two gentlemen. So I really encourage you to keep this going, not just, you know, because our, our city needs that, that representation, but for the people who need this and really are enjoying it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This has to move down, sorry. One of the things when I was younger that I always assumed would happen was I would grow up. Never happened. For the record, my name is Susan Elberger. I'm a state representative from Ward One, working with my colleague Alicia Gregg. My address is 11 Birch Hill Drive. I am a, I like to know where things come from. So I decided to look at some point, look up the state constitution and what it says about education. And it says that knowledge and learning generally diffused through a community, being essential to the preservation of a free government. As a state rep, the biggest challenge that I have is making sure that my constituents get informed. And George and Bob do a remarkable job of getting information out. Sometimes I think they don't know how much they're getting out to people, but they do. I met them at one of the forums that Bob mentioned, the League of Women Voter Forums, where they were taping, and we talked for a while. I talked with Bob for a while, George for a while, and he said, would you like to come on the radio and do a show with us? Okay, never happened before. And one of the things I was concerned about was, do you want us to have, my husband Jim and I, do you want us to keep within some kind of narrow band? He said, no, it's your show, you do what you want with it. They do that with everyone, whatever you want to offer, and it means that people who listen, both on TV and on the radio, are getting a broad range of opinions, so they're making sure that people who live here are hearing a lot of different things. Among the things that have not been mentioned were a couple of forums that I put together as public information about children's issues, maternal health, and state finances at the library, that they covered. Really important information to get out. They do a wonderful job of outreach, just by being at all the places that they go. Lastly, one of the things that impressed me was that they had an intern from Nashua Community College, whom they trained and is now an employee there. So they're not only getting information out, they are involved in the community to make sure that the people who live here are learning more and have a place to use the information that they get. Please renew their license. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Thibodeau, Alderman Ward Six, Address 71 Blossom Street. I met George probably close to a year ago. I had an idea for a, for a show that I wanted to produce with a friend of mine, to talk about a variety of, you know, American political-type issues, and I was never sure about how to do it, I never had done one before. So I called George up, and he had me come down, he showed me the studio, talked about different options we could have, once the show was produced, and gave me some ideas on structure and that kind of thing. It never went anywhere. And then I've also reached out to George a few months back about doing a, a public information with our very own tax collector here, Don Enright, about educating the citizens of Nashua on a variety of monetary and tax topics. That one, unfortunately, we ended up doing it downstairs in the Aldermanic Chamber instead. But anyway, the public access channel, I think, is, is an untapped resource, and I believe that it is a great opportunity for a lot of people to express themselves, to, to share their passions, their ideas, regardless of ethnicity, race, color, creed, whatever. So I think it's great, especially when we're in a diverse community like we are. And so, that's pretty much all I got. So I'd, I would appreciate it, and I think that it would be in the city's best interest to re-up their contract for the next two years. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Lori Ordolano.
Hi. Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. So I don't sit on any board, and I'm just a citizen, and having access to this, stations, all of these, the radio and the TV, is, is really beneficial for somebody like me. I've never gone on on my own, but I've been invited on to talk on various topics, and it's nice not to have a three-minute timer that beeps and says, sit down. So it's, it's really a valuable resource, and I think that the two folks running it are unique personalities, they're really dynamic, they're very creative, they're always thinking of what to do next and how to improve it. And when I hear their budget of $175,000 for what they do, I know it's low. I know that's a low contract for two years. And so, in my opinion, they're well worth the value, and it's not coming out of taxpayer pockets. You know, the, the Telegraph and the union leader are so lean on coverage now for Nash- now for Nashua, and they really struggle. I think all media sources, and to some extent TV, to get people on it and watching more and have metrics to really measure, you don't know, but I think it's a really valuable resource, and it's all about Nashua, these stations. It's dedicated, and it's, you know, Inklink is here now, Nashua Inklink, and they give you the, you know, online, my phone just beeped with the online articles, which is great, but, you know, I think the print papers, that even with their digital form, have been minimized, really. You don't have people to reach out to, to run stories. There's virtually no investigative journalism, and really, the investigative journalism that's happening today is happening by individuals, people who just take an interest, and they develop a background, and they study, and they research, and they become the journalist. And resources like the television and also online resource tools with a computer allow you to do that pretty effectively today. So I'm a big proponent of this, and I think they add a lot of value, and I think they, they do a lot of benefit for the community. I surely appreciate it and the opportunities I've had to use it, and I hope you'd all, you know, vote in favor and, and let them continue with their creative ideas and, and their expansive minds. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of the, the list of people who signed up to speak. We'll now read through the, the letters. Oh, okay. We'll ask again. Are there any opposition speakers? All right, are there any in favor speakers that have already spoke or want to rebut the nonexistent opposition? All right, now... Oh, one more time for opposition. Okay. Now we'll proceed with reading letters.
This one is from AMR. Dear Chairman Srinodha, I'm writing in support of the BRT TV LLC, seeking to extend their contract with the city for the next two years. George Russell and Bob Bardis have provided an invaluable service to the city by independently running and managing the public access channel. Their dedication and commitment are exemplary in providing viewers a well-rounded catalog of shows on varying topics viewable on Comcast Channel Six, their website, and on Roku. They have filmed community events, parades, and holiday stroll, electoral debates, and other important events within the city. For well over a decade, I have personally interacted with Bob and George. My recommendation comes from firsthand experience with them in my official work capacity, along with personal experience, as I have done a show that was featured on Nashville Public Television on Maple Syrup Processing 101. I hope you saw it. The team at BRB filmed me and produced the show, and I was very pleased with the process and the outcome. Further, as Northeast Regional Director of AMR, I do a weekly show on WSMN Radio that is also broadcast on Nashville Public Television. The exposure and promotion of AMR on both stations benefits the citizens of Nashua and the surrounding communities, as well as providing important information out to the public via multiple platforms. Their reach allows us to successfully promote important community health and safety messages in a timely manner. I recommend without hesitation that the board extend their contract. As I am unable to appear in person to the public hearing due to the prior, to a prior commitment of time, I would ask to please incorporate my comments into the committee record in support of the extension of BRB TV LLC contract with the city of Nashua for the two-year term of July 2025 to June 2027. Thank you. And that is Christopher H. Stallos, Northeast Regional Director of Government Affairs. And then this one is from David Shoneman. To whom it may concern, I am writing in support of the two-year extension of the contract the city of Nashville has with BRB TV LLC to operate and manage the public access channel. I have worked with George Russell and Bob Bardis over the last three years on numerous public access channel shows, both as a host and as a guest on shows hosted by others, and find them and their staff to be very professional and helpful in all they do. The facility and equipment are very well-maintained, shows are professionally produced, and aired in a timely manner. I know from speaking with viewers that the programming is useful and well-received by the public within the Nashville community, I mean, Nashville market and, and beyond via YouTube and Roku. I strongly urge the Cable Television Advisory Board and the Board of Alderman to extend the BRB TV LLC contract, and I look forward to continuing a very productive relationship with BRB and Nashville's Public Access Channel. Sincerely, David Shoneman. This one is from Thomas Beale. To whom it may concern, I am a New Hampshire poet who lost his wife to cancer on January 20th, 2020, and, I'm sorry, 2020. In February, February of 2020, I began writing her a poem each day. Several of my friends thought I should find a way to share it other than, other than my website, Poetry, and he gives a website, website. A woman I met at karaoke, Georgia Markey, decided she would produce a television show on Nashville Public Television. Thus was Poetry Palace TV started. Volume, excuse me, Seventeen, yes, Seventeen Internal Revolutions, is being read for the entire second season, as well as episode 35 through 52 of season one. Although I am not sure how many viewers have seen the public television series, I have received rave reviews from those who found it on YouTube. Sometimes, all I, all one needs to assist them in their journey through grieving is for someone to listen or acknowledge their loss. I have found that reading these verses in front of the camera has helped me as well. My whole studio experience of, the first for me, has been amazingly smooth due to the efforts of Bob and Art. I have been completely satisfied with BRB TV and the studio services provided. Thomas Beale, poet. What have I got here? Oh, okay, sorry. All right, this is from GNMH. Hold on. Think I need a little water. Dear George, on behalf of Greater Nashville Mental Health, I am writing to provide my enthusiastic recommendations for Nashville Public Television. As a trusted collaborator and producer, producing our agency's television show, The Empower Hour with GNMH, over the past two years, this partnership has been instrumental in creating a platform that showcases the individual's work of our agency and highlights meaningful contributions from both our staff and external community partners. Since its inception, the show has grown remarkably, producing over 20 impactful episodes that resonate deeply with our, our community audience. Through compelling storytelling, professional production quality, and the commitment to authenticity, NPT and team have helped us foster great awareness of mental health initiatives and community resources. The success of Empower Hour has been, has been further amplified by our ability to promote and share it through various platforms. These include, but are not limited to, our social media channels, our agency's website, local public access television, email newsletters, and community events. We also share these episodes with our advisory board, Board of Directors, and community donors. This multi-channel approach has ensured that our content reaches a wide and diverse audience, further enhancing the impact of the series. Nashville Public Television brings an exceptional level of expertise, creativity, and professionalism to every aspect of the production process. They have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to understanding our vision, capturing the voices of our staff and partners, and delivering episodes that are both informative and engaging. Looking ahead, we are thrilled to continue this partnership, with plans to release several new episodes in 2025. These episodes will feature diverse perspectives, including internal GNMH staff and external community partners, further reinforcing the collaborative spirit that defines the series. Nashville Public Television has consistently exceeded expectations, ensuring that our content is not only of the highest quality, but also widely accessible to the community we serve. Their dedication to our shared goals makes them an invaluable partner, and I have no hesitation in recommending their services to anyone seeking a reliable and innovative production collaborator. Please feel free to contact me or our board, and if you have any questions or require further information. Sincerely, Cynthia L. Whitaker, PSYDMLADC, President and CEO. And this one comes from, excuse me. Oh, Bob Bardis.
He forwarded someone else's comments.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Honorable, oh, I'm sorry, this is Honorable Harvey Key, reports. I am, I am the host of Nashville Strong, and have been doing shows for the last eight years at Nashville Public Television. During the tenure of BRB TV managing the channel, my guests have included Maggie Goodlander, Cindy Rosenwald, Mayor Donches, Colin Van Osteren, Melanie Levesque, and Dr. Anne Vermette, and a number of local business people. Some of my shows were filmed in the studio, and several were filmed on location of the business that I was spotlighting. I am extremely happy working with Bob and George, and it is beautiful to, to just come in and do a scheduled show whenever I like. They accommodate me and my schedule and are professional. They have experience working with the public. It is easy for a citizen to call and schedule a show, rather than coordinate with a department at City Hall. I support Bob and George and their efforts, and recommend that you renew their contract with the city. Thank you sincerely, Honorable Harvey Key. All right, this is from the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the, of the United States. To whom it may concern, I am submitting this letter in support of Bardis-Russell Broadcasting to continue to provide national public television to the city of Nashua. Over the past several years, Bardis-Russell Broadcasting has provided the Nashville VFW Post 483 exposure to the city. They show many of our events filmed or covered live. This show, this show the public what we do to support the community and veterans of our country, state, and city. They also provide the same services to other nonprofits in the city. Many nonprofits find it difficult to get public coverage of the services and events. Bardis-Russell Broadcasting has provided us time each week to provide information important to the veterans of Nashua. Without this service, the city of Nashville would be losing a valuable form of information and entertainment. We hold help, I'm sorry, we wholeheartedly support Bardis-Russell Broadcasting to continue to provide the public service, television service for the city of Nashua, and that is Louis Chipola, and he is VFW Post 483 Adjunct Quartermaster. Is that it? Oh, this is Kevin Avar. Okay. Dear Chairman, thank you for your consideration of the contract extension of BRB TV LLC for operation and management of Nashville Public Television Channel Six. As you know, this two-year extension was included as an option in the three-year contract agreed on two in 2022, and is at the same rate as a current contract, despite the large increase in costs and that we've all experienced over the past three years. I believe that extending the current contract for Channel Six would be the best deal possible for Nashville taxpayers. I've hosted my own show since 2010 and find it an invaluable way, not only to keep the people of Nashville up to date on public affairs, but to give a voice to people who deserve to be heard. I am always impressed with the dedication and professionalism of the crew that gets our shows on air. Nashville can take pride in Channel Six, and I remain proud to be part of it. I urge your full support in extending the contract with BRB TV LLC for an additional two years. Thank you for your continued service to our great city, and that's Senator Kevin Avar, Senate District 12. All right, okay. All right, we've got two more, let's see. Dear Chairperson Srinodha, references made to the agenda of the Cable Television Advisory Board proposed for the public hearing meeting to be held on the 16th. Further references made to the minutes of the CTAB meeting held on December 13th, 2024, I guess, specifically the following requests made by Tim Cummings, Administrative Services Director for the city of Nashua. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be appropriate for us to set up some sort of public engagement relative to the extension of the contract. I would suggest that we do some sort of public hearing or, or town hall in the evening timeframe, maybe just after the first of the year, to solicit the community's input on extending the contract so we can get some guidance from the public, and then continue on through the process to evaluate the contract extension. In accordance with the provisions of the Nashville Code 5-28 public hearings, I, Jonathan Sterling, assert that the renewal of the BRBLC contract should be renewed for two additional years. I am providing this statement in writing to be entered into the formal minutes and record, record of the, of the public hearing in lieu of personal oral and favorable testimony. I am currently the piano player for the Nashville-based, I'm sorry, jazz trio. We are artists in residence of the Nashville Community Music School, and have supported many of the community outreach initiatives of the school. In addition, we have played numerous fundraising charitable events for the Greater Nashville Chamber of Commerce, United Way of Greater Nashville, Revere University, Delta Dog, St. Joseph Hospital, and many more. One of the most memorable honors was to support the grand opening of the Nashville Center for the Arts. We were the very first musical group to perform in the beautiful facility. We always considered ourselves to be based on the Nashville, out of Nashville, and Nashville Public Television. Channel Six, administered and managed by Bob Bardis and, and George Russell, has positively supported us in Nashville in many ways. The television production equipment, the team at NPTV Channel Six have seamless and, and user-friendly process for checking out cameras and television production equipment. They provide superior support and training for the user that independent citizens can record content, audio and video, for subsequent submission and broadcast. Remote production. If there was a public event, NPTV Channel Six has it covered. I have volunteered with George Russell and Bob Bardis several, at several events, including the school board debates, mayoral debates, multiple downtown Nashua parades, Nashua summer and winter strolls, farmer's market, tribute to the Holocaust memorial, just to name a few. Most recently, NPTV Channel Six provided support to produce the Ucasta Holiday Concert, remote from the Nashville Public Library, and the Nashville Choral Society Christmas Concert, remote from the Immaculate Conception Church. NPTV Six are always striving to capture the, the best of Nashville, no matter when and where it is happening. Take some water.
You should have split it up, then different people read differently.
I know. In studio production, the trio produced a 60-minute holiday-themed show in December of 2024. This show was recorded at the NPTV Channel, TV Channel Six, studio located at 11 Riverside Street. Our show demanded NPTV BRB staff to be available between 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM to produce the one-hour television special. The production staff, specifically Art Colvin, provided an efficient and enjoyable atmosphere for our first recorded television program. The attention to each detail, including backdrop, lighting, camera angles, microphones, location, power needs, and even which chairs were all professionally facilitated, excuse me. It was a great experience all around. To the, and to top that, the resulting show was fully produced, including introduction, segment, ending credits, where we're thirds within 48 hours of the production. Based on comments received via social media and word of mouth, the show was a huge success. The experience was so positive that the, the jazz trio was planning to produce a Valentine's Day show the first week of February. The benefit of NPTV Channel Six and BRBLC to the citizens of Nashua cannot be overstated. The intercalation of, of NPTV into the fabric of the character of Nashville is apparent. It is my belief that this is a direct result of the efforts of BRB TV, George Russell, and Bob Bardis, to always have the pulse of the city, and to encourage and provide an outlet for public expression and creation. Our first amendment right, the programming on NPTV Six provides entertainment, education, and timely information produced of the people, by the people, and for the people. I'm an avid consumer of NPTV Channel Six, and value, and value and respect to shows that my fellow citizens produce regardless of, regardless of the content. I am amazed at the quality of the production and creativity of our, of our citizens. However, it is my opinion that freedom of expression, speech, uniqueness, and creativity... However, it is my opinion that freedom of expression, speech, uniqueness, and creativity will be minimized, if not fully evaporated, evaporated if NPTV Channel 6 is not independent of direct city government management. Thus continuance with third-party oversight and execution, I strongly encourage the CTAB to support the two-year extension of the contract for management of NPTV Channel 6. And that is Jonathan Sterling, sincerely and respectfully submitted by Jonathan Sterling. And that, that's it. All right. And then this one? No. No, I do have that one.
This is the last one.
All right. Here it is. Dear CTAB, it has been a pleasure working with BRB TV over the past several years. They have been a tremendous asset to the, the Nashville Senior Activity Committee, or Center, I'm sorry. They run a slideshow on Channel 6 that features many activities and seminars at the Nashville Senior Center. Some of the slides have featured free programs on security awareness, frauds, Medicare, and more. We also promote our Veterans Coffee Club and Coffee with a Cup via this route. In addition to this, they have run live coverage of the annual Senior Center Variety Show as well as the annual Breakfast with Santa. TV coverage at the Nashville Senior Center has increased its visibility in the community and introduced many to the center. Our live camera view has been viewed from, viewed more than 30,000 times. Some seniors have visited the building just to see where we have the camera. These events and this information would not have been covered by anyone else. This station is a valuable resource to the community, especially to many seniors. I would highly recommend a continuation of this contract. And that is Judy Coons Porter, MBA, EA Development Director, Nashville Senior Activity Center.
I'd like to thank everyone that sent their comments in.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I also have one letter that was submitted by Wendy Hunt, President and CEO of Nashville Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Sent to you if I may approach.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you'd like to read it, that.
Give Jeff a break.
A little water.
For the record, Mr. Chair, Rony Camille. Dear Mr. Sernota and CTAB members, I am writing to submit comment for CTAB's upcoming public meeting to be held on January 16th by the city's Cable Television Advisory Board, CTAB. Due to the previous commitment, I am unable to attend this meeting in person. On behalf of the Greater Nashville Chamber of Commerce, please accept this letter of support to renew, extend BRB TV LLC's contract with the city for operation slash management of the Nashville Public Television Channel 6. In my opinion, BRB TV LLC provides well-executed, very professional broadcast to the Nashville community. From a Chamber of Commerce standpoint, the service they provide is invaluable to our business and citizens. The Greater Nashville Chamber partnered with BRB TV LLC on two in-person political events, which were sold out due to venue capacity. They were our September 23 Merrill, Nashville Merrill Debate and our September 2024 New Hampshire gubernatorial debate. With BRB TV LLC broadcasting these events from the venues, thousands of Nashville residents were then able to watch these debates either live or post-event via a recording. Further assisting the business and citizens of Nashville, BRB TV LLC also has two live cameras set up in the Chamber's office with views of Main Street and the riverfront. Sincerely, Wendy Hunt, President and CEO of the Greater Nashville Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. All right. So again, I would like to thank everyone that, that sent their comments in, and certainly for those of you who are present and shared your insights. So at this time, it is eight, 14. I'm going to close the public hearing. We will, the next item on the agenda are remarks by members of the committee. Do any of the members of the committee that are here want to make any comments? Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank everybody who has come out and, you know, I, I attend a lot of city meetings and, you know, it's, it's disappointing. You know, Alderman Thibodeau can, I think, share my opinion about this. It's, it's disappointing that more people don't come out to the meetings, but I, I assume they're all watching on TV, on the, on the government channel, not on the public access channel. But, you know, thank you very much for coming, and I'm, I'm very impressed with the positive opinion that everyone has expressed about BRB TV. And I've, I've heard nothing that would make me, you know, when, when it comes to the vote, I've heard nothing that would discourage me from voting to continue the contract. I assume we'll be taking it up at the next.
At the next regularly scheduled meeting, yes.
So, thank you, everyone.
All right. I, I would like to thank the members of the committee for being here tonight, the members of the, the public who joined us. There was one comment that I, I think, not necessarily requires clarification, but I, I think perhaps suggests that, that the, the public might not be fully aware of exactly how public education and government channels are funded in the city. So as was mentioned in, in Attorney Bardas's presentation, the city is a franchise authority and grants a franchise to cable providers. In our case, we only have the one Comcast. And as part of that franchise, Comcast pays the city a franchise fee. The franchise fee itself is a payment in, in lieu of being charged to use the city right-of-ways. It's set out in the FCC Act, that's the 1984 Act that, that is cited in the supporting materials. The, that fee, it, it's termed a fee. In reality, it is a tax on the cable bill. It's a percentage of the cable bill, and it is a separate line item on your cable bill. So it's, it's not coming out of Comcast's profit. It's tacked onto the end of it and is paid directly by the cable subscribers. The statutory cap on that is 5%. In the city of Nashville, we have kept it to 4%. That fee itself and how it is structured was laid out in the franchise contract that made with Comcast. And unique to Nash was that the split between the city general fund and the funding for public education and government access was spelled out in that contract, where the bulk of the money went to the city general fund and a portion of it went to a special revenue fund that funded the operations for public education and government access. Until this fiscal year, the contractually set aside portion of that was adequate to fund the public education and government functions, but with the decrease in the number of cable television subscribers, the revenue that was going into that special revenue fund decreased at the same time that, as was also mentioned, costs were going up. So for this fiscal year, for the first time, we actually had to ask the city government to take money from the general fund to supplement that special revenue fund that was existing as a separate funding source. Because the, we had been frugal over the preceding years, we actually had a carryover surplus that was used for capital improvements. That capital improvement surplus is exhausted. So going forward, the contractually stated amount of that franchise fee is going to continue to go down and is going to be a sharper decrease. So we will be, in order to fund the public and education government television functions, we will, for that remaining amount, be in the ordinary city budgeting process, and that will be coming out of the city general fund, which, yes, a portion of that general fund is funded from the tax on the, on television, but it is still coming out of that general fund. And that money that would be used, coming from the tax on the television that has been taking up some of the, the funding that, that would ordinarily be coming from real estate tax and other city fees, that money is, is still, it's in that general fund. It's, so that's a bit of a convoluted explanation, but we are in a different funding process than we have been up to this point. And I, I think it's important that that's understood by the public, that we've done our best to be very frugal up to this point, but we are now in a different, different situation. And it, you know, in the aggregate, this is a relatively small amount compared to the city budget, but it is still city funds, and we as a board have a responsibility to be responsible in how we allocate that. So if we've, if we've made BRB jump through hoops, it wasn't just for our own enjoyment. Mr. Morgan.
And, and just to add to that, I know Mr. Bardas had a wonderfully comprehensive speech at the beginning. Thank you for putting that together. You spent time on it, we can tell. I, I do just want to add a little more color to the finance piece, you know, making the number sound so simple that it's 300 and something thousand a year. I think a couple of things that aren't always obvious to everyone is the maintenance cost of the studio does fall within our budget, and the cameras are old to incredibly old. Magic that they're still working sometimes. We actually didn't replace a lot of our cameras because we chose to pay payroll. It, it got to that place. We had emergency meetings to make sure we could pay people. This was not just a, oh, we, we want to make sure funding is there in the future. It's a, it's a right now problem. So I think that it's wonderful to hear so much support. And just to put any color or look into the future, I think a lot of our decision is going to be based on our ability to make the decisions on who to go with and how to make sure we provide the service to the public. And last, first on, did you guys do a great job? You did a great job. We just need to make sure we can find the money to make sure that it's there to pay you for two years, because right now, I don't, I don't know that it is.
Mr. Mascherino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along the sentiments of my fellow members, this, it's, you know, if, and then also thank you for everyone who has come out on this, this evening and as well as sent in communications. One statement that was made during the testimony was, services are free. And that is great and wonderful that they're free to anyone who wants to come in and produce a show. However, this is reality. Nothing's free. Everything does have a cost, unfortunately. And out of this franchise agreement, as was stated, it does not only pay for this contract, it also pays salaries and utilities for the building that the studio is located in and other contracts as well. So there is a budget shortfall that we are trying to overcome both immediately and long term. However, the testimony this evening will be a major part of my decision on moving forward. So again, thank you, everyone.
All right. Chief.
Steve Buxton, Nashville Fire. Just, could you clarify the process for me? So we have public testimony tonight. At our next meeting, we'll take up a vote to make a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen?
Yes.
And the Board of Aldermen are the ones that will take the vote on whether or not to extend their contract?
That's my understanding.
And would it be in this board's best interest to reach out to members of the Board of Aldermen as we're approaching budget season to advocate for an increase in the budget?
We are, that, that's part of what the, the subcommittee has been meeting about, and we've been working with the administration, and we will certainly be speaking with the Board of Aldermen as well as we get to budget season. And the, the hope is that we have, are able to articulate a plan before the, we're deeply in the budget season so that we're, we're staying ahead of that.
Very good. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Could I comment about that? So the, so, you know, the, the way the budget process works is that it's the mayor's budget. And so, you know, the best place to, to make sure the money, you know, is there to support, you know, not only public act, public access channel, but the government channel and the education channel is to lobby the mayor now, because he is working on the budget now. And by the time he presents it to the Board of Aldermen, a lot of these numbers are, you know, I don't know if you've ever seen the budget book, but it's a very thick book. There are a lot of numbers in there, and those numbers are put in there by the mayor and, and the administration, you know, the department heads and all of those people. By the time the Board of Aldermen gets it, it's pretty tough to make any changes. And so, you know, the best place to, to make sure the money gets in there is to lobby the mayor now. And then, you know, hopefully it's in there when the mayor presents his budget, and then you can lobby the Aldermen to make sure it stays in there. But that's, you know, that's, that's been my experience. By the time the Aldermen get it, it's, you know, pretty tough to, you know, it takes, number one, it takes two-thirds of the Aldermen to add anything to the mayor's budget. So if it doesn't get in the mayor's budget, you know, it's, it's a tougher road to hoe, tougher road to hope, you know, after he presents his budget, you know, to add money in there. As I said, it takes a two-thirds vote by the Aldermen. So, you know, people who are supporting, you know, this contract, you know, now is the time to start talking to the mayor and ask, tell him it's important that he puts that money in there.
All right. Any other remarks by members? Mr. Camille.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For you, Rony Camille, resident. First off, thank you to all that have spoke, come out this evening. It's nice to see members of the public come out to a public hearing. When I was appointed to this board, I mentioned to the Board of Aldermen that public access is the cornerstone of democracy and more importantly, the cornerstone of this constitutional republic. And so, you know, we've heard lots of statements from the public, especially from state reps and Aldermen. You know, you, you chair had mentioned how the franchise fees are broken down. I'm not going to repeat myself from the past two years. You've already said what needed to be said. I really urge the public to reach out to the mayor's office and obviously the Aldermen to take a look, good, good, strong look at how it is structured. But I, I, I speak for, you know, I, I work in this industry, in another community, the folks at BRB TV do, they're, they're, they're out there, they're everywhere, as well as the folks on, on the P, the educational channel and, and the government channel. So those are my remarks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If there are no other remarks by members of the committee, Alderman Jettie.
I have one more thing I'd like to say, if I could. I want to applaud Mrs. Ordolano for keeping her comments to less than three minutes.
All right. If there are no other remarks, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Is the motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.